We're hot, right? That's. We have a long, long fifteen with very many. We want to be the independent public company. That's what we've been. Been in that. Who is a pool? I was just telling Megan that I don't have a pool.
We don't. And that's thanks to. We'd sign to the other. We might have a little. Trying to figure it out in China. That you know. Trying to take care of like the. Projects that. Yeah, come back and let us see. You know?
Yeah.
And there's another one where I was trying to get those signature.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah. Let's see.
We're going to follow orders. Uh, we're doing. Um. We can. So if I. So we can microphone. Let's hear them here. Good morning, everybody. Uh, so we are following orders to three five P M. Uh, whole couple of votes. Uh, starting with the top three. Dan, Vincent, you're. Again. Uh, uh, so we have several sets of minutes to agree. Want to talk all. Do you think? So.
There was.
Fine. Uh. Um, on Mr. Taylor. Dan, one second. Uh, favor. And we are on to our third. I need to be glad for the most. All favor. Good. Okay, um, so November regular meeting. Uh, when we talk about the Thanksgiving schedule. Would be as many as we could be advertising.
My family needs it to your name.
Okay, really?
I'm just verifying that's. That's what I need to know.
So we have to try. And it changes the last. Okay, um. So many related updates. Um. Didn't want to say this, but we were.
Sure. Uh, Jim, as you know, Jim passed along eight. Uh, highly recommended land use zoning and planning commission expert attorneys. Uh. One of them was with the same firm that that the borough uses as a whole. So I actually, I um. Sent emails to seven out of the eight of them. Uh, briefly describing our situation and requesting. Uh, their information. Uh, six out of seven have gotten back to me. Uh, what I requested was send me your information by the end of business Friday, and then I'll circulate to planning commission. Uh, and I'd like to request two planning commission members to join the interview committee with Jim and myself. Uh, to kick things around with individual attorneys. What I'm envisioning is roughly an hour long with each interested attorney. And we can, uh, we can go as deep as we we want with them as far as questions go. We'll get resumes and or their portfolios. As background. Uh, but as I said, all six of them. Are experts in land use and zoning and all things planning.
We see the planning members. Members to be part of the project.
I think that's probably going to be the change for the.
Yeah, we're not. I mean, that's more just talking about what is the planning agency wants to do. Um, so that's more the public thing, but it could be a change if you want. Yeah. So looking for volunteers.
So we have an acting. Although during my senior.
Um, yeah, maybe something. Um, so. I can, I can volunteer as well. There we have. Really, really good. But. Um. It's a very, very good job in the life. That's probably not optimal in terms of not really offensive. Question to ask before I leave.
Correct.
Um. Yeah, I already know what's in the. Um. We should do a couple of questions. I think seven and we have all direct. Uh, generally, thank you. You guys. You both with Italian objects. You're sorry, I understand. You have your business on the spot. I'm going to tell you two. But we. I think that.
Yep. Yeah. Yep. I'll circulate everything I get on Friday and then look forward scheduling following it.
Or you can be a. We're talking about this. So we're going to go down. Um, so where we are is. Uh, and they do the fine. I would be the author. And we wait. Walk to the bench. Six fifty, that's the other form. It's like this. Um, so I guess that we have some. We have some. The idea is.
Yep.
Okay. And for a question that we want. If you're going to circle open, I use. You go to Friday.
Yep.
And then we use the. Portfolio that you could go. Um, so. You guys want and honestly, they do what you see and then come up with questions. Have you had your questions already or? No.
You did.
We're going to find off on it. Send it out on Friday. I think that's what we come up with. A piece of dynamic.
Yeah.
Where we see is like.
Yeah.
Um. That's why I would open, you know, for if you are. Um, okay, um, remember.
No, I think so. Yeah.
Um, so that next is. Um, we need. Uh, protection.
Yeah, I mean, I have to, um, email, um, second this morning. Um. She is. And I told her I'd get back to her after two. And whatever may be, you know, from the. The. Now, if if that is maybe is. Is your, you know, we, we are what I'm going to be. Not. Is that a standard?
No, I can not.
Yeah. And I know you know, uh, you know, you're. So the growth that is just from maybe a moment on on April. Um, to that. Um, I, I am telling itself with ultimate. Really, what I do. Um, science. Um, so we'll do the fine.
Yep. Perfect.
Um, when you're going to tell me something tonight, there's maybe by Friday. How long it's been. What I'm saying.
Yeah. Yep. Yep.
And funding for that. Do you need money for my.
How much you can do. Yeah, however it works out.
Yeah. It's probably for the. Some of those. Um, so just as I mentioned, uh, it's going on. So three memo. Um, so. You know, I know some of them is. A flexible table because we're hoping to our district to buy it. Um, but, um. In the separate divisions are on this year.
Whether it's time downs, whether it's all or not, more than just thinking about it. There is there is there is rural ordinance that addresses this stomach thing. What we want to ensure is that we don't recommend something um in a zoning update before we can conduct with the current ordinance. Doesn't mean that what we decide here is something that could be recommended to council to update the rural ordinance, but right now we want to start with people on the front here saying what's in schedule A, what's in schedule B, and then maybe what's supposed to happen in terms of about example, what happens.
Yeah, we also want to confirm with this best practice. Right, yeah. Probably they're going to be annoying, they're not going to be, they're going to have to protect the community.
Um, uh, is there any uh, is any of that, you say like any of those, where is this section regarding? So this is your request to the council. Uh, because here goes going to what we're trying to mitigate is some back and forth with council. They have things that are already topical on their minds. We want to encourage them to move out for us to pull who's been in draft, play written in basket. We want to tell them eliminate that ping pong and that is positive. And if we're requesting the council within the draft, you say like, we're in so the draft story is a tick right now, so there are issues with the election, you want what you see within these interviews, and what you see specifically to be committed within the state office of the, they can comment on anything, but that's narrow, they're exactly, um, that's going to be that from yet. You may have not met, I don't think that, so I think we'll be introducing you to everybody. Okay. Um, so, um, so the question, we're coming down to the rural council now, probably certainly department down, down building, uh, areas, process, uh, again, that's second with engagement of the government, in terms of council. Um, rural council will consider becoming more like, um, uh, more than a community engagement committee, uh, like the recommendation that we made on this council back, uh, so that was potentially cannot possibly be intended to be doing like that next, um, it doesn't need to be. Um, my education, um, doing for our community, the good, uh, we don't want to go to the way this year, uh, with the reason, it's kind of ongoing, the piece that until I'm in book going, but they not all the things that they what is done, they've been doing, uh, it's kind of a both ends situation. Um, so that will happen, um, in parallel to this one, uh, we're in primaries. Uh, and as you, as you said, we're not, we're not, we're not, uh, speaking itself, so we have time, time, we'll get to a time, uh, to act it, uh, in the, uh, example here, uh, and I did, you showed anybody that, uh, in your appointment, you know, about that else, um, you probably got the same door security, you probably here, um, the reality is, um, you can call the office, you could probably even put a service request in if you want to do, um, somebody can get a help, they can be helped, they can, there's a lot of worries to get ahead of them, um, and, um, I think Mike, you're kind of the center of all things, um, in terms of that feedback, somebody like the specific person, uh, that they can reach out to, uh, Mike is, uh, where in the heart of it, okay? Um, and finally, um, make a request, um, the party means, uh, the public question from perspective, um, after that, please provide. Um, so right now, whatever I'm saying is, uh, the theory is that we're going to be kind of meeting, we're going to have that conversation, um, not that any significant measure, but we can certainly help and we can prepare to die out, uh, you give that very quality perspective, um, and we got to have it.
So you can take, uh, the fact that it's, 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 I guess that person is going to be with us, but we can have talk to them, because it's, 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 it's not very, I mean, it's, it's, like, for, for, you should be asking about, you know, what's for what's doing with the stuff, where you have to go, and people, you know, what, um, yeah.
Right, it's, 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 they're not able to perform, they're not able to, um, but if you have the experience, you haven't walked everyone, you think about few years, you say, you know, hey, that reminds me of the time that, how it's happening, you have a similar situation, whatsoever, okay? Um, so with that, um, we, we, we just hope this is an open island, um, memo. Um, is there anything that is not, that is, that is expected to be there?
Well, something, and something about doing that, so I, and so I not, so I might have to be a fun speaker, but I, I'm, 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 I'll be, I'll be addressed all of the things that are, that, 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 that.
I believe so, I mean, this is what I kept from the meeting. It's possible that I missed something, so if I did, certainly let me know, either via public comments or, or from your perspectives, but yes, I obviously didn't put the items that were, requests that were voted, uh, not voted down, but, uh, at least, uh, initially rejected by planning commissions, those are moot points now, so those are not on the list, uh, so only revisions and unresolved topics are, are on the list.
Yeah, we, we lose that from, that is now in, um, okay, that is the only, that's the only one that I heard, right? Um, so that's where we, just, we think we had it, but, um, anything that we missed, we want to hear about it, um, so, uh, you understand that we have the table, those, those things that we, that, that they're unresolved, we're seeking advice on them, how to resolve them, um, so we give it, um, but we're kind of stuck in where we have some professional opinion on those matters, um, we think they've resolved, um, we have the rest, we have the manuals, um, and, you know, that does not mean, um, that all things are done, and we certainly welcome the two thousand and many dollars down, and then, um, it was, you know, maybe, maybe, it was lost over, sorry, something, yes, we said, um, not, yes, so, that in mind, um, the memo has been, you know, process, um, around some of those stuff that we enjoy, um, we have incorporated things that we asked for, um, like a working session, um, so I'm going to pass to the discussion now, uh, become, uh, sort of their first revision now, okay? All right, so this is, um, this is, um, so I feel like, um, a little bit introduction here, uh, because, right, Mike has put together, uh, a, I guess, the thing about his packet is the second section in the packet, the number ending, how those drafts are planned, what are C D C plans and those practices, uh, so we're going to look at that on the way out, is it?
Okay, because I think there's, 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 you're talking about community development corporation, or practice, uh, or practice, and you want to work, some, 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 some practices, so it's a topic of, of, of.
Okay, the purpose, um, is by installation of the practice here, which means community development corporations, and which topics to consider, in a kind of, if they want, and we're the community development corporation. At no point, at no point are we, noticing, lacking, navigating, or doing anything in terms of officiating citizens around a C D C, we're familiarizing ourselves and communities around what a community development corporation can do, and then maybe we can start, um, with that understanding, taking about some tracks, some witnesses, some of the opportunities that, uh, presents and breath, um, that, you know, could come from, um, you expect around when they, um, get that, um, so with that in mind, uh, Mike, you have, um, a fair amount of experience in the working industry of corporations, so you want to play a video to some of the things, right?
Yeah, big, big picture item. There's a, there's a lot to consider when you're building a C D C, a lot of, uh, business planning and, uh, technical decisions need to be made, but from a broad perspective, C D Cs for the most part are nothing more than garden variety nonprofits, but that, I know, I'm, I, I saw that, that's why I'm adjusting, thanks. Are nothing more than garden variety nonprofits, typically a C three, um, that, uh, having a, okay? For what of them? Would be, oh, the memo, oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, I think it's not on the computer.
Oh, okay.
We can pull it up to the other website.
Okay.
Okay, so while it's coming up, uh, let me briefly describe the difference between a C three, C four, and C six as far as non private clubs. C sixes tend to be chambers of commerce, they're a business association. C sixes and C fours can delve a little bit more into direct advocacy initiatives if they like, so if they have something to say to the rural council or some other public bodies, they are, they can better do that within IRS regulations than a C three can. C three can technically not engage in political advocacy of anything. C fours tend to be unique, uh, for the most part, but a C D C can be a three, a four, or a six, it's really those, uh, questions come down to what do we want a C D C to do for crafting? Uh, so that's their legal status, uh, the big question for planning commission is, because C D Cs can engage in a broad spectrum of community development activities, very broad spectrum, you're only limited by your own creativity. Where, where do we want to kind of narrow in and build a niche for a crafting C D C? And there's recommendate, not recommendations, but, uh, examples of things that could be done at the end of this moment. Um, and then, and you know, it's really about business plan, so money's going to be a thing, they're going to need seed money, where'd that come from, how's that work? What will be the business activities of this agency? Now, of course, grants, philanthropy, and governmental appropriation are always, they're always that, too. And governmental appropriations are fantastic and fundamental, but that's not, it is not a funding strategy, it's what you do when you don't have a funding strategy, because everybody does that. So many C D Cs engage in some sort of entrepreneurial activity that creates revenue for them, could be a money loser, so for every dollar they put in, they may not get the whole dollar back, but still creating some form of revenue for them, and that's all public purpose driven. Uh, Pittsburgh has a million comparables, I think like a hundred fifty two C D Cs are on the books for neighborhoods and, and places like Carnegie, all over the metro, so we have a lot of comparables that we can see from, Carnegie is a great one, I think they're our neighbor and, uh, most closely reflects the marketing of the area. Um, but it really comes down to business plan for the C D C, what's the public purpose? How is it going to create revenue? How big is the board? Uh, those sorts of questions, uh, and maybe another critical point is they are technically private entities, so the meetings are private, and the board operates in private, with the exception of annual IRS filings and, uh, the charter documents registered with the IRS and common law, so they're public documents. So there's, there's an awful lot to consider, uh, but like I said, I mean, really the fun part of the conversation is at the end of the memo for possible crafting C D C initiatives, by which I listed two, four, six, seven of them, just kind of off the top of my head, uh, but again, we're, we're only limited by our own creativity, so it is engaged in some a broad spectrum of activities. Yeah, it's basically a tool, it's, it's an independently operated tool, uh, for community development that a rural municipality, neighborhood can lean on to, to, to help, uh, achieve whatever public purpose that they want. Uh, lots of C D Cs get into a new market tax kind of game, and that creates a ton of revenue, and a ton of new projects, uh, lots of C D Cs are in housing, uh, uh, you know, I think, I think we may be familiar with some of the more active, uh, Pittsburgh centered C D Cs, the Bluefield Development Corporation is a big one, Wilkins Church is a big one, uh, Oakland has one, that's a big one, uh, and they're very active of all sorts of things.
So I'm just, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand, like, what's going on, right now, it seems to be like, you want to, you know, so, I, you know.
Can I, can I throw down a couple of questions here, that I think we need to clarify, um, and I think we need to, we need, um, community development corporations, there's three community centers to govern, they are not a profit in some type, um, category, five or one, two, three, four, six, seven, um, they typically are run by, um, people with a business need for them, who are in that particular community, that is, Wilkins Church, Community Development Corporation, Community Development Corporation, um, have the interest of, where is that, um, working right now, um, so, community development corporation is a nonprofit, private entity, um, they, um, are not bound to crafting geographies, they just partner with England, Hornburg, Tupperware, and, um, what they choose to pursue is their own agenda from the people who do it, um, if anything, uh, what crafting could do, uh, for examples of what we could do if they were community members, who wanted to form, um, a C D C, one of the things we can do is just take community that's C D C companies out there, and we think that we can do it, um, and that's the worst of it. Other things that could be done potentially, with apps, you know, comics, or, um, it does take, um, it does take a business plan, to formulate this, and it has to worry business guys, um, it does take, um, things like insurance, right, you need to have their, their team, it does take some, some, some capital, um, to be it, um, there are potentially grants out there in the universe, um, and technical assistance that just comes from one of their regional political arms, who have the general, that's why we agree with GED, um, to have a community working with community development corporations in various parts, or sometimes in the, um, that could help guide and use this quality, the value of things to get. So we could provide resources on formation, um, we could provide resources on, um, educating them about the zoning, and what we, you know, kind of say, they've been set up a lot of rules, and what they're planning, uh, cannot do, but we cannot hit the agenda, we have nothing to do with that, so that's helpful, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm very familiar with what, like, C D Cs are, I just want to, you know, I think they are, I feel, I feel, I mean, like, starting, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I didn't teach the things, you know, you can be, can, uh, can be, this, that's not, you know, it gives, yeah, I think that's, yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, I, 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 I think it's, 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 I
And I think, well, that's, now, what I'm, what I'm hoping to find is, man, is how it's taken, is kind of a number of times, it's passed through years, um, it was, and so far, and so, uh, people are telling me, and they're, and they're, and they're, and why they're, uh, in fact, in fact, in fact, in the, in the, um, I, I'm kind of agreeing with most of what you said, and then disagreeing, um, with what you said, um, the reality is, I, I want us to understand what C D C is, what C D C is, and know that we're not that , um, because we could jump forward to the end of those, to the end of the year, um, so that's, right, and it's just, just, uh, just the, also, we're going to look it up, um, you know, funding, planning, insurance, and that's the formation, just like you would with any agency, you have to go through that, there'll be entrance, you go, business, etc., uh, do you want, they have to do, uh, if there's possible initiatives, those C D Cs are doing there, um, I'll, yes, this year, I'll be speaking, um, we could thank the UCF project, um, one of the things they're, like, uh, in the, uh, plan, um, they could, um, do some great projects, we could usually go sharing in, in business, community, etc., um, in terms of retail, restaurants, uh, with speed packs, um, small version marketing, and I think they could say, yeah, that's, yeah, they have, they have, and, we speak as well, we speak as well, like, you're right, um, establish a, 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 um, and startup programs, um, and then partners, uh, with businesses, um, around different places, with different programs, city out there, if you do, and, 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 you know, how to do, actually, what 's up, I'm not even going down that path yet, it's a, it's a, area of stuff, yeah, um, and then, uh, uh, the last season, I think the people, um, you know, you think about, and that's, you know, based on organizing, and it gives, um, uh, us a, so everything is not, I don't want to, mostly the things that are on this list that take the, um, post forward by a C D C, are things that I expect this to make, to drive in towards, uh, as the country's building, as the, 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 um, I think, I understand, and really having a lot of, any of those C D C there, um, allows that, for, for, definitely, uh, people in the community, say, you know, I'm interested in C D Cs, they could try to look more, um, and we could talk about, you know, what is the force that could be offered, offered from crafting government, and, so, um, to provide, um, these areas of innovation, so we are not, as in the, we will be, um, I always think that we should, um, things, and, 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 I think, that's, we
No, I think, I, 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 I,
I'd like to propose, um, that one thing that was, you know, if you're starting to work on all of these things anyway, start moving in that direction, and I think what I've seen happen in other places where C D Cs are formed, is often when the work starts to get, um, exacting, and you get a certain number of community and business leaders involved who wants to, or maybe there's a bit of a blank they want to go after, or something that, you know, requires something related to this, so you can move forward with, uh, the initiative, I mean, we're already doing this, you can work on the retail, um, uh, in the, and whatnot, and move in that direction, with the idea that a C D C could happen, um, but you need to develop a, 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 um, and so that's, I think that we can, we can keep ourselves in a, you know, on, in the back, you know, you know, this is a possible thing, like, clearly what you could use, um, but we're not, yeah, yeah, thinking that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I shouldn't be giving you a, but, I'm particularly, I'm, 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 we could be aware, as I already said, um, we could be aware, like, at some time, for such a, kind of, domination, we should be aware of anything that we might do, how we're, the, 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 uh, only, we can't really, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of, it's, right, uh, however, we can just, by there, and, 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 so, if there's a, C D C works to be, in part, sort of, in a, in a, um, and, and, we could have some ideas, well, we didn't have a need, because we have, we have, in that, in that, and, and he's, 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 I, I, he's, 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 um, and, and, the reality
So I'm hearing three steps, right? So the four weeks ago, like we said earlier, um, the committee, um, I've made three steps to see what we can be doing. Um, specifically, and then there's that two weeks event that is separate. And we're doing this in Oracle, um, the test, but if I was here, um, there are relations with communities. Right, I'm the president of the community, it's the starting center, right? Um, there is, um, the general public is understanding everything that we do. Um, and then there is, um, there is government relations, government relations, C O P is going to be developing. Um, that executives are services and understanding how to contract those on telegraphics for S R E, like the research. Um, you know, there is, you know, access to, um, the municipalities for how to go about finding, um, potential state brands, for example. Um, state brands around big dogs, giving, like, the organization. The three areas that I kind of thought it, it seems to be, you can kind of visualize the current, um, I think, um, um, it's the community, the environment, and whatever. So what I'm trying to do is, you know, that's just certainly when you talk in the back, you know, you know, bring the things, you know. So, um, if we look at those, we can find that we know that if, if we, if we think about this before that. And if some shows that we would probably have here is making sounds that, um, could use values with, um, asking for, give all the people around and out of, uh, analysis. And that, you know, the current series are very, very, uh, uh, business class, because that was, we didn't say how to go now, because we're, we're not going. Um, but I think we're like to kind of stand down with this, you know, what is community, right? Do you want to, or is it not, we, we, uh, same thing, uh, uh, and then, you know, we, we can, we put ourselves next in line, that I'm not telling you. But I think that we, you know, the community, I'm certainly wanting to do, yeah, but many of them, they could help us, right? Um, uh, if the other is a smart head in the, they're just thinking of the others, right? Um, the other is, it's going to come, uh, in relation. And I think that one holds back from the community, and when we're done with the data for C O P, uh, if the other is trying to do, if you are. Sitting out there like now, thinking about, uh, we're allowed to, uh, we, we know that, uh, this way, that we can, that we, now, we need seven more hours, that's, 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 that's. And thank you for coming here to my, um, access to, um, this, 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 um, this is, uh, this is. These are both buckets, and one is about, uh, educating. Well, we're gonna be in the community, so we're still, we're still, and we try to, uh, uh, the, 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 uh, one, uh, one, uh, we set up, uh, the, the, uh, I think.
So we have, we have to work and I would, I would, uh, I would say the senior reality that has to do with this. Um, those, um, the one people can maybe implement the development and all of the, uh, uh, retail restaurant students, uh, remember. One of them being the retail restaurant student, you know, government under, um, many events and, um, guidance, um, from business. Like the lady on city is, um, it's my life, we, uh, so, uh, we took our business and based on first thing we want to do is what's
Whatever the issue or whatever your request is, it's not just a meeting of last year. And.
Oh, I know, I know. I thought you said you were right.
But there's zero time. There's no time associated with this unless they're being they ask. So now.
Oh, it's one thousand. Yeah, I said so much. I said so much. Yeah, okay, we can. They want to be able to do on the phone. Sure, yeah.
And then. Yes. And and that I bias that there's that's on there. Bias that there's nothing on there and some type of place that we decided to say. We reorganized, we have people, we have lots of houses, a lot of things, everything. That'll never happen again. Now, we have a little bit of employees and we're sending them. Then. Yeah. Um, I I don't know what to tell you again, you know, and tell you the leading concept. We're just trying to. Um, we're trying to. So, uh, we're trying to keep any of the one in mind. Not. Um, if you would, uh, we'll be going with, um, uh.
We can do what you'd like, and I'm starting on. For. It's pretty good.
Yeah, if you think it's the public comment, the only draft you write to them. And all the others are visiting others and out of it. Charlie, we're limited to three minutes. Um, that's always good. So the public comment has been reviewed, and they're not necessarily having to do anything involving the agenda. Um, there are, there are, uh, such things, um, that we don't view as informed. Um, the council or the board do, or using comments, they're probably telling the agenda. Prior to this thing, this is open public talent, and you can talk about whatever it is you like. We get three minutes to be told, so long as you, uh, put your name, uh, in contact on the list. Uh, and I think that a great reminder, you don't have to read that into the record. It's very important to say, what are they doing, or that sort of stuff, that you do, you have to say. It's really, yeah, so there are no ways, so you have, and we can yield, uh, with without requirements. Uh, but you still have to put the address.
Yeah, we're mostly just about how sound is.
So I don't see that, so if you put your name on the list, or if I should ask you, just get up to the thing, and you get in. John Newman, fifty-sixth, February, at the end, and he's Michael of Ohio. I want to go back to the, uh, number one, stated, um, uh, ten nine, ten nine, so forth. With the, uh, CDC standing and that's actually his background. I want to highlight five of both because what the CDC, CDC are. Uh, starting with with one, there are typically five of one. C three and our private corporation, he's the point is this, unless most of us know what that means. And you should respond one more time. Uh, the CDCs are governed by independent board of directors. So who does that influence, independent board of directors? And then again, may engage in broad spectrum of community development activities. What does that mean, a broad spectrum? And then the one that really annoys me is CDCs are largely private and not subject, subject to sunshine law. You know, we. We're talking about transparency in this community, and we're talking about creating a commission that is, is it? Adhering to sunshine law? And then again, there's no geographic limits for CDC. So, as you mentioned, I hope you really think about that. Well, I'm going to take that right off the top of my spine. Um, we are not, Crafton is not, um, forming a community development company. What we were doing is investigating and trying to come out of our own way. It is a private business, it is a private nonprofit business that acts on its own force for whatever objectives it wants. If one should form, it is in the best interest of the local government to try and partner with that organization and understand what it is that they're doing. But we have no idea what they would be doing, because we would be in no way capable of forming a, um, a system. This is simply education about what they are and that we don't have. And then, so again, I appreciate that, yeah.
And not we don't have one, yeah. There is no CDC or tactic, right? It's not me, it is, there's no, there's no ending out there, but it puts in fact that you do things like there is in Brazil. If that's a citizen they performed, and with a public people involved, where they got money, and they got funding to push them this. That's sort of totally independent from nothing. So I think maybe if we, it's not, it's not.
Right, right, so down, sorry, you gave me something.
There.
Yeah.
I don't.
May, may, may sometimes not walk.
I'm saying.
So we do want to make sure that everyone is like, what's on here? Okay?
Thank you for raising that.
Yeah, thanks for making a player by that, and I'm glad that nobody wants to be thinking about it.
On, I would just say, be wary of something like that. Um, it seems like CDC could be largely grant grabbing, so we might find ourselves kind of stuck into like natural terms of the people you're engaging. Which seems to give them a bit of a clashing point, especially, um, every number of, during hearing committee. It seemed like your vision was a big factor that came for a long time, you know. Who did get what you basically wanted with your season down? Um, so I would just say, be wary, we don't have one that has to, we don't want one that's great, um, but be wary of that. Um, two, A P's, based on my limited research, doesn't seem like they have to be invisible based on looking at what housing and housing head. Um, and what other people like maybe, um, you know, reverberating do. Um, it doesn't seem like that's like a mandate, and we have to be adding those things in. Um, I'm sure the lawyer will give you that. Um, finally, just one kind of, um, is the trail information, I can say. Don't limit it to ten people, um, the zoning, uh, steering thing, we had. I believe there were probably a fifth or ten people on there, I think we had special allowance from the Jordanian lady. Um, but of those ten people, really only like four people showed up. Um, and one dropped out, and by the end, there were three people, um, along with. Um, and there were maybe only two, you know, like regular not, um, you know, like non linked people, right? Um, now there's the, you know, regular, so I would love to volunteer, get a part of it, but I would say don't limit it, because realistically. You're not going to end up with ten people who show up regularly, Greg and I made every, with every meeting, um, but most people didn't show up. I would say that's my way to make things clear. I'm trying to be that.
I, I just want to talk about CDC, uh, I agree mainly that maybe. For fundos, um, I do agree with things that we are doing together. Probably, maybe the way we call it, I think it's a particularly historic setting that it can just be held out. And, uh, Netflix is actually, um, what's different about in the practice? And, uh, I'd be more than happy to help anybody out on that, um, that meeting I built as well, so. That is, um, started with how it, you know, so just wanted to say that, and that, um, yeah, I think CDC. I think they, um, I think they're a nonstop, or CDC, they're talking about those who need, need back to talking about. He opens that that meeting, and then we're actually very much, you see, it's really.
Hi, CDC, over a couple of things. The R D M meetings are renewed as soon, in the N R E T box. There's two and two that are going to be changed, clearly committed with, uh, without an announcement. They're going to be renewed on, yeah. They're like, is that correct?
We wouldn't make that lower than seven, you don't need it.
Renewed. And the CDC, I know you've got it, but I'm not. I think it's on a borough letterhead, and it clearly says. Some kind of considerations of a one and a property CDC. It clearly has top. So I know we said we're not going to do that, and that is emerging. And I don't think anything part of it could be on by a lot of them. There's a very concept here, just. That's the concept of the. And, um, specifically, Julie, that's not my calling, but she suggested we be building several businesses. And I think that is another one that's a test, kind of a story to convey. So. He has all the stuff in my brief. And her goal, and you can call him on the phone, with the business, but doesn't he have a list in the bar?
We do, but it's, it's, you know, from a taxing perspective, it's not necessarily laying out what any business does, like. You, you need a, you need a better yes than a yes.
Okay, this is working on some, I, I have it like, it's like they're working on the vector.
Yeah.
So this is a different thing than a formal crafting.
And would be a very useful asset, yeah.
To have a little.
Crafting.
And which is, which is.
That's a special call for our.
Maybe this way. Yeah, sure, with a list, I have some in fact, uh, which, which is what's happening together, and then you're considering the government, because it's much different. And. Further, we tell in Redmont, we're. I know I do, um, job description, the mic, but it would seem to me, um, the community and economic development direction. So this might be something easier to do. And this today on the news, the Tommy's team have gotten a delivery of money. For temporary residential, for civilians, for doing the roof from jail. In temporary residences. And I'm clearly able to expect any of this money to come through, and it's still relatively.
Uh, that's the first thing we got, I haven't heard of.
Different than you. Can you do the day of this in the city of this, sir? Uh, yeah, the city, I believe, yeah, and how? Yeah. There's kind of a. Part of thing.
You're following me, too. Very similar.
CDC, uh, I would love to comment on everything that you guys discussed, and I just spent two hours not being able to hear anything, and, and, you know, the commission members. Were saying on you. Um, and that's not your fault, like, I'm texting you, and you're over the moon, and I'm watching yourself, and I'm texting, I'm texting the council, like, I'm texting other council members. If you're exhausted, and you're, 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 how do you get, for the whole public perception, for us, transparency to be received by us? When something is similar to that, it's a problem. And when you're being pulled in the middle with anything, hey, it's not working, and you don't solve the fix the problem. And this is a call, this is a calling to you inside planning, making you a good deal. But calling things, there's another reason, it wasn't reported at all, because you could not press the button. So what's going on? And like, you know, you want to, to have trust in you, and why aren't you fixing the problem when you know about it in the living room?
Well, there's nothing I can do about it, I know that I can't fix it right now, so we didn't, we couldn't do it, um, so that we could get as much as we can out of it.
That, I mean, I don't understand how there's nothing you can do about it now, how you're not swift, you know what this is, then, when you're the owner manager, and you handle, you're in every meeting. You're in every meeting, you dealt with this time, so many times, and I think we see it, we feel like we can't do anything about it, it's ridiculous. In that case, we can bring them again, here every minute, and we know it, since, since like you clearly can't be trusted with it.
We will, we will work on this next week.
Oh, we will. So what does that mean? And you're like, yeah, and I'll do the best I can, what's that mean? Are you giving some?
Yeah, I guess. I just think that, I was preaching also, I was worried about all of this thing with any sense of, to stop it, and you're going to do it. Yeah. So, 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 I'm, I'm turning around, and we, we, we're all going to end up, to ensure that everyone can, can.
Sure, you're welcome, you thought your government makes it, we thought earning the P, though, but I do a free thing, so, I did. You'll do a free thing, you want to do. So, I said that. Are there any staff you can?
Uh, let me call the firm that works on me, one tomorrow, what's that firm? Uh, Flint Holloway.
Thank you.
Flint Holloway.
Hi, dear. Um, I just, I just. I'm sorry, I'm. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Start of the conversation that was happening the last meeting, and the second last meeting. Um, but I feel with that conversation, it's really, I suppose, CDC with any money, they look nice, they are, that's what, that I don't know. But I think the meaning of this, by myself, is, is there nothing more than that. There's nothing else to respect. Um, myself, personally, I'm standing here, and I'm telling the other people, I can't speak for these people, but I do speak for myself. And I say, I have lived in this community for five years, and I'm taking these capabilities and the things, which is why I have, I have known, so, um, so. This is, that's just, easy, and that is, yeah. When I speak to you, values, they're higher than that. That seems to be the problem. How many states would get like this, that is wild? I think even with this new government, everybody's popping up, what ability, I don't see how that's going to do. But, oh, these putting on those sound assumptions, it's always, no, they're, they're not screaming, how great this community. It sounds different all these two years, that with this in the borough, and trying to borrow, these things. So you go, here's, I would move, here's, where is this? This means that I use myself, it's not a, we just, we want to use credit to make this better, and it's why we're busy, like, with the community. I also like to say that, um. It was talk of, um. When you say, working with the property owners, the property owners work with us, so you have to try to do much of you. Um, if you can play a customer, I mean, wouldn't you, what that means to you, would you say, property owners work with us? Um, if you can say a possibility, I think, would you, would you, what that means to you, would you say, property owners work with us? And you, 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 and what does that look like?
Sure, um. So that's in the context of attracting retail tenants to Crafton. Because Crafton is largely built out, property owners landlords have space potentially to lease, so, uh, you know, commercial space. What we would seek to understand is what space is on the market now, and do those landlord, property owners, which partner with us in the retail recruitment initiative? So, does that make sense?
I think that, you talked the other time, and that's that. And I'm.
Uh, it would entail, uh, gauging their comfort, if they're comfortable with the burrow opening their leasable space on marketing materials, and engaging with the private sector to try to fill that space. Are they even open to leasing that space, if they don't even want to lease, then, then there's, there's no partnerships to be had. Uh, but most landlords are actively seeking tenants, and most of them would wish upon the end of the burrow, because it's helpful, and helps to do it, but.
Um, yeah, I have to, second question. As, as a business owner, you have to lease that place, like, there is a hard, but. And into the borough, instead to the commission, but it can't, no, that's it. That, which is something that has not been done.
Not, not a wrong idea.
And how long have you been?
I think we all say, I mean, and, I was hoping, I, 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 I'm scared.
That's correct.
I mean, it's possible, I'm not sure that, that I was, I was, maybe, but, but then, this and thirty, it won't pass out all the time, and I'll have any, any. And, yeah, and we, we're talking about what we're doing, yeah. Um, and so, down in D, that is the west, which we, talking about, like, and, some, and there, and, we have to make up the place that we can sit around. So, it's not working for you, there's nothing, we're talking about, and, and, that, yeah, that means, yeah.
Yeah, great.
I mean, like, if this can, I mean, if that will follow you, yeah, I think, my business kind of, we would, we're definitely, like, we want that, and. No, I think that, I think I, I do need this to do. Uh, would you, first, go, you're going to go, you know, and.
Uh, potentially, I did, like, Blue Snail's a great example on your, and so I spent an hour with the owner of Blue Snail, and what she was asking was exactly what planning commission discussed today. I, she primarily gets customers, like, I'm the Seraphinos, or parents at the dance studio that mosey down the street while their kids are teaching. And that they'll, they'll wander in, and what she was requesting was more clustering of businesses, to get more of that foot traffic, where more people wander in, who's a child. Uh, so that's a, that's a example for your story. Um, but yeah, I mean, really, any business that, that may leave a conversation with the borough, we'll try to help them in whatever way we can.
No, I have to ask you, it's, 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 you know, we have to be, we have to.
Yeah.
You're off. We, we, we're very, very.
A few weeks ago.
And how, how is it going to start?
Uh, she decided, I don't know.
Not exactly, yeah. Okay, all right, okay.
Uh, we would, uh, we're talking, we're not, we're not.
Do you know? Um, just a comment on the comic street ruling. Um, and I realize there's no way here about what the risk is for down going to other sections. But I would hate to see you upzone that section, find out that, that you cannot, put it back, where it is. Where, there, like, there are a lot, waiting on, that, that, to, 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 back, you, the, the. Then, with the, the risk, and, you can't, you can't, it's, it's, I want to go along with, you know, to go back to. Then.
There is.
Um, I think it's important, oh, by the way. This is not on the people on the, um, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's important, you know, the CDC, you're on, I can, that's, I know, I know, I like. I thought it was. All right, I think this is all made, I think it's important to know if the CDC is somewhat larger, and it's already that's planted, because the plan is to send more, to, 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 to. There's some materialism, so, CDC, they put a way to, they're, and so, there's, 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 there's. It is impossible, I gave him, I knew that they were, and he was issued, the CDC's everywhere, and not having a, you know, how to spend, constantly, in the, about. Crafton means that I pay for the tenancy and the sound barrier of the CDC, you know, it's very. Nothing's seen in the CDC with young men, before it's supported, staff is protected, and things that is, say, a venue on, not, you'll start to have, with the relation of lessons that I say.